Good evening and welcome to the June 18th meeting of the Tarrant County College Board of Trustees meeting. I would call the meeting to order and ask if there is any public comment. Mr. Gates, do you know of anyone? Thank you. We have two special presentations this evening. First, from the Northeast Campus. Chancellor, do you want to introduce Dr. Gobin?
Absolutely.
Good evening, board members. It's good to have all of you back. It seems like we were just here three or four days ago, doesn't it? Time goes by really fast when you're having fun. And good evening to all of you out there. So glad to have you all. See our faculty leaders are almost all in place. Have a few who are missing. Is that right, Madam President?
That is correct.
That is correct. But welcome anyway. Welcome to all of you. It's a wonderful day in the neighborhood today. It didn't rain anywhere I was today. It didn't rain. And plus, we've got so much stored up, so that makes it really, really, really nice. That makes, especially makes David Hokey happy when he doesn't have to pay quite as much for water when we get all of that rain. Every month when we meet, Mrs. Ayala, we want to present something to the board that would enlighten you a little bit more on specific things that we do. We have so many, many, many things that go on at Tarrant County College, so many things. And it's difficult for a lot of people who work here to keep up with all the things that we do. So not only do we feel like we're educating board members, we feel like we're also educating all of our employees as well. And of course, the people who do all this great work are always more than pleased and proud to present to you, to let you know what they specifically have done. And it also helps you to know if we're still going in the direction that you want us to work our hardest in. So tonight, we have two presentations. We try every month to give you one that's strictly on the academic side. Everything we do ultimately comes to the academics out of the house, no matter what it is. All the supportive services are all here just for the success of our students academically. But we try to give you one that is specifically related to the academics at Tarrant County College and the other to the administrative side that supports all the other things that we do. So tonight, we're very pleased to have two presentations. The first one comes from the Northeast Campus where Dr. Alan Gobin is so proud to be the president of that campus, he can hardly stand it. But I would say that of all the presidents, they're so proud to be the president of that campus, they can hardly stand it. The second presentation is going to come from Dr. Joy Gates-Black. One of you, I'm not sure which one it was, asked a question last month or month before last about how we were doing with the supplemental instruction. And Dr. Gates-Black is as proud and pleased as she can be to give you an update on how well that's going. The research experiences in lab sciences is a very, very interesting one. I haven't spoken with anybody lately about that project, but the last time I did, it was going really, really well. I think you'll find it a little bit different from what you heard about two months ago. Was it two months ago, three months ago, Dr. Jordan, when you had a presentation from South Campus? When I first saw this on the agenda, I said, oh, okay, so they want to come and talk about how well they do, so make sure that South Campus doesn't get all the credit for doing research at Tarrant County College. My guess is, however, that you'll probably find some research going on on all those campuses. That's my guess. But I promise you, we're not going to bring five presentations on all the research. Tonight. That's right, tonight. So, Dr. Gobin, I would remind you, Dr. Gobin, and all of your people, and I know you're really, really eager, but we do, Reginald gives you a time period that we'd like you to try to stay within. So if you all can kind of contain all that enthusiasm and keep it to that, we'd appreciate it. Okay? Welcome. Glad to have you here.
Thank you, Chancellor Hadley, Mrs. Appleman, members of the board. Special welcome to trustee Ayala.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. There. Are we on now?
There we go.
Dr. Gobin, can you excuse me one second? How many students do we have in here? Oh, quite a few of you. And you parked in the Houston Street parking garage. Is that right? Who parked in the Houston Street parking garage? Houston Street, right here, right next, right across from the, from us, the Omni. You'll get a ticket. Just bring it to our police officer, okay? All right. They'll get a ticket. Okay. How much is the parking?
Parking ticket. To validate.
DJ came down and told me.
Well, tell DJ to find out how much it is and find some money and pay for their parking.
Parking ticket.
Okay.
Not a ticket ticket.
Right.
Let's put it this way, a parking fee. Everybody get that part?
Validation.
A parking fee. You'll have to pay. Does everybody have money to pay for it? You want to bring it and get the money before you go over there? You decide there. Okay, Dr. Gobin, you're on.
Thank you, Chancellor. For our Chancellor, board members, and our guests, it's our pleasure to show you a little bit of how we make success happen and how success actually improves by the people who are doing the work. So I'd like to acknowledge several folks because this was a large team effort and then introduce our presenters. Dr. Kristen Byrd, Catherine Hoffman, Dr. George Aliaga, Claudia Cash, Dr. Kenneth Drake, Erin Garve, Dean Charlene Cole, Vice President Gary Smith, my predecessor, the distinguished alumni president, Dr. Larry Darlage. A lot of folks put effort into this. Funding was obtained from the National Science Foundation with the Council for Undergraduate Research and Title III Grant. So our presenters tonight are Dr. Marius Pfeifer and Dr. Jean Maynes. Come on up.
Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Gobin. Madam Chancellor, board members, guests, thank you for being here tonight. We're just going to take a couple of minutes of your time. We'll be quite brief. But I wanted to talk a little bit about some innovations that you may or may not have heard of that we've been doing at Northeast Campus, and I assume you can all see the presentations. Yeah. We have a little show here. The genesis for this is that we had, in, life sciences traditionally has relatively low student success rates. STEM courses in general, biological science is certainly fitting that mold. And it's difficult to get students through the first courses. They're a bit of a shock because of the difficult material and the very large, as we say, fire hose of information. So we've been investigating new ways of presenting the material, both to successfully train the students and also invigorate them, stimulate them, and get them to stay. That's the real trick, is to keep them in the STEM program. So that's what we want to talk about just very briefly here.
Before you leave this class, you have that program.
Yeah, this is Northeast Campus, and this is the, yeah, right.
It's cracking.
Yeah, it is. Although it's biologically fairly interesting. So we've been taking the students out there to investigate what's happening there. There's a, it is, it's very attractive. And there is, what we like to say, there's an ecological succession going on, and there is, you know, new organisms take root there. So, yeah, that is on our campus. And those are some of the students from the program we're about to talk about.
Can we go backwards? Wrong way. There you go.
All right. So the challenge that we have is poor success in introductory science courses. You know, this is well-known. The solution we've chosen specifically to focus on is integration of research experiences into the science courses. So rather than teaching about science and teaching about research that's been done, we teach science by having the students actually do science, do active investigation of novel problems in the laboratory. And that's the basic idea right here. And of course, the goal is to improve successes in those courses and develop scientists, keep people in the science fields, which is a bit of a challenge. And we know nationally that, you know, that's something that we need to improve. So this is TCC's contribution to this national goal right here.
By the way, have you used, you know, the [inaudible]?
Oh, yes, we do. Yeah, this is a target area for supplemental instruction, absolutely. Major's Biology, yes. So, you know, some background information right here. For the sciences, for biology at Northeast Campus, we're talking about about 6,000 students per semester there. And for major's Biology, 1,500 students, as you could see right there. And some somewhat discouraging numbers, but that's the sort of thing we see. And this is not just us, this is national numbers, about 35% success rate, A, B, or C, which are going to be transfer, you know, success scores, and about 25% on average retention from one semester to the second semester. So that's what we've been having to deal with. That's the, that's sort of the baseline information right here. What we chose to embrace, particularly coming from the AAAS, which is the Academy for the Advancement of Sci, or the American Academy for the Advancement of Sciences, is their call to arms, really, for a change in science education, which is abbreviated as Vision and Change, that call to action right there. And they made a number of different recommendations, which are listed right here. And the one we focused on, again, is integration of real research experience into the laboratories. Of course, there are other lines of attack on this problem, and those are listed right there. But, and these are done to various degrees in our courses, but what we're talking about specifically is our laboratory experience right here with research. And so the primary objective of teaching science by doing science is to teach the scientific method. So we work very, very hard on getting students to develop good questions in the science courses, design experiments to answer those questions or to explore those questions, collect information, synthesize that information, put together good presentations, present to the public, and exercise their critical thinking muscles all at the same time right there. Another good advantage of this particular way of dealing with our research laboratories or with our science laboratories is that it goes along in step with a lot of other initiatives that the district has been doing, particularly our QEP, the Quality Enhancement Program of Critical Thinking. That is natural for the sciences anyway. And so we're really pushing that in these courses right here. And then this also aligns with the core competencies that we've been working on for the last several years, particularly focusing on the teamwork aspect, getting people to work together like they do in the public sector, in research, in actual industry, good communication with the public and with their peers, and of course, empirical and quantitative work, right, of the highest order. I'm going to hand over to Dr. Maynes.
So the other thing that's on this slide is an actual poster that a student in this course presented at the end of the semester. So this kind of represents the culmination of their work. It gives you an idea of how they're learning to present their work. This is a pretty standard way to present material in a scientific communication. These students will also write a research paper that summarizes this. So they have to really work on their communication skills and present their work at a high level.
What's the length of the paper?
What's the length? We don't have a specific length, but it's usually between five and 10 pages, somewhere in that range. And with the introductory students, we work on drafts. They can't just write a paper from the get-go, so they do several drafts as they go. So this was a pilot project that we did for four semesters before we actually implemented it. And so some data from our pilot project is shown here. So in the blue bars is the research lab versus the red bars with the traditional lab, just comparing the two. So we had cohorts divided up into those two courses. And we were able to increase, oops, sorry, increase our pass rate, absolute pass rate, between 11 and 17% by implementing this pedagogical tool in the lab. And we compared their lecture grades, and the lecture grades were pretty consistent. We didn't see that we were, you know, making it easier or anything like that. The lecture grades are actually all quite high still. And so we were really encouraged that we were keeping more students in the class and also passing more students with this approach. And so we have now converted all of our, the first semester labs are all going to participate in this. And that actually started this year. In addition to that, we've seen some additional benefit from students who've gone through this course in that they've been able to do some advanced research experiences. And so we really felt the weight of that this year. Our campus first started offering the Academic Cooperative Course this year, and that may be what the South Campus presented on a couple of months ago that the Chancellor mentioned. So we offered that in Chemistry and Biology this spring, and so eight students participated in that. And of those, I think six or seven of them had been through this course, the Biology Research Course. We also have a number of students who are participating in undergraduate research opportunities at the university level through the LSAT program and other programs. And many of these students had also come through this program. So we think we're building scientists, that we're increasing the number of students who will stay in the sciences and participate at the next level in these research experiences. So for instance, this summer, we have five students that are participating in a Summer Research Academy, and most of them were in this course as well. And here's a poster from that Academic Cooperative Course. I was not the faculty member here, but I'll try to explain this. This was isolating an antimalarial compound from a plant. So this is a plant-based, natural-based antimalarial, and the student was interested in trying to find more efficient and greener ways of isolating this compound from plants. And so this work was all done on our campus, and they had some collaboration as well with Brit here in Fort Worth, as well as the University of Texas at Arlington. So this was a single student in that research cooperative course and the work that they presented. And they also wrote a paper and made a poster. So this is their poster from that cooperative course.
I'd like to just add in that, you know, this piece of work right here, this poster does represent serious investigation of a new, of a new compound and new extraction techniques. So this is doing science by doing science at really the national level right here.
What is the Shimatsu Institute? Got me. I don't know. Do you?
Well, the Shimatsu Institute, it's a, it's a company that's funded a instrumentation lab for chemistry and the higher-end biological sciences at the University of Texas. I think they secured that with a fairly hefty grant. And we've been given access to some of the very, very advanced machinery there for, you know, students running through the Academic Cooperative Course.
So I think you mean UTA, right? UT Arlington.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I, yeah. UT Arlington, I'm sorry. Yeah. That's what it is. Yeah. And so it's a, it's a pretty nice facility to have access to.
So just to summarize, we'd like to thank the faculty members who were involved. Dr. Gobin mentioned them, and they're listed here. Claudia Cash and Dr. Kenneth Drake were the faculty that directed that Academic Cooperative Course. And we had really great assistance from one of our support staff members, who's just been fantastic and really been invaluable, Erin Garve. We, of course, like to thank our administrators. In particular, Gary Smith was really instrumental in getting this project off the ground. He even went to a weekend workshop with all of us to get this going and helped to secure space and then renovate a space for a new biology lab that I think some of you saw. And that's been a really nice, well-designed space for this type of pedagogical approach. And so I think Gary's here, and we would like to extend our appreciation, especially since he's retiring. Some of you might know that.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And in honor of Gary's retirement, he's been here since the 1960s. And many of you who've been here for a long time know him very well. You can go ahead and roll that if you'd like. And we want to show you a little bit of the people behind the magic that happens in the classroom.
What's your number, Gary?
Thank you so much. Gary.
Let, uh,
Gary, we thank you.
Let's have Gary come up to the front, so.
Come on up, Gary.
You know, I've been, I've been picking on Gary for, he said in the 60s, I wanted to call the year. And since Alan doesn't remember the year, Gary, you can tell them. Otherwise, he would have told him, you came here in 1967.
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven. Yeah. See, I remembered, and you didn't.
Well, I'm old. I don't remember.
I don't remember those 60s.
Well, I wanted, especially our new board member, she couldn't see around that corner, to get to see who you are. And stand up to the microphone for just a quick minute. This your last board meeting, you reckon?
I hope. No, probably.
Probably. Well, this is a great time for you to tell us what a wonderful day in the neighborhood you've had here for all these wonderful, wonderful years.
It has been. It has been a wonderful, wonderful time. You couldn't have any better people to work for. Everybody has been great. And I didn't get into trouble a whole lot. I could tell you about the Humane Society releasing, having to get rid of evidence off campuses and all sorts of things. But I've always appreciated the freedom to do basically what I wanted to do most of the time. So I appreciate that. It's been wonderful.
Well, Gary, I, you want to speak, Ms. Appleman?
Well, I, I'll speak on behalf of all of us at Tarrant County College because there may be a handful of newbies who don't know you. But the rest of us, of course, do know you extremely well, and we know what great value you've always brought to this institution, no matter where you were in your position, nor did it matter which campus you were on when you were doing that. And one of the things I've always liked, I think, most about Gary, is the, what's the good word? Uninhibited nature. He has.
She's saying I have a big mouth is what she's talking about.
I've always appreciated that about Gary because it didn't matter, you know, whose project it was, or whose problem it was, or whose success it was. It didn't matter what campus Gary was on. He'd speak on whoever's campus it is about. And we've always appreciated that. Gary, you've brought tremendous value to this institution. You know, you sit back and you think about how fortunate it is and how few people who are coming on today will ever have the opportunity to do what you've done. First of all, to work at a place like this where you have the freedom to move about and learn from various places, but more importantly, to make a really defined contribution. It takes a while, as you know. You've got to be grounded in a place for a minute or two before you can make a real difference. And you've had the good fortune to have been here all those years and make those really meaningful differences. I wish that I had an opportunity, every time we have a long-term employee retire, that I had an opportunity to say those words. Because I know so many wonderful things about everybody who works here. Because I've been here almost as long as dirt as well.
That's right.
I mean, you got here a year before I did, and
That's right.
And you're I mean, you got here a year before I did, and, and you're leaving before I leave, so. You know, one, one of the things, though, that I'm famous for, Gary, and that is not being reluctant at all to bring the stars back when we have a project that we know the star can help us with. So if we call on you to do something, it's probably because we feel like only Gary can do it, so don't say no.
Well, my, my rate will be higher. But feel free to call.
I'm a good negotiator, Gary.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Chancellor Hadley and members of the board. Thank you for standing behind all the great people who are doing this magic in the classroom and making great things happen.
Thank you all. We are so fortunate.
Thank you, Dr. Gobin. And thank you faculty members and to, are those your students who are back there with you? Those are your stu-, I'm sorry?
No, the supplemental instructions.
Oh, the supplemental instructions. Oh, those are the smart cats. I see. Very good. Well, that was an excellent presentation. One of my board members said you all didn't take questions, and I think she has one. Dr. Morris, you have a question?
I do. Well, first, to say that the significance of your increase should be duly noted. And so my question is, what plans do you have to apply this process to the greater population? Because it's no fun for any student to get that less-than-successful grade in that biology one or whatever. You know, when, in my day, we called it the cut classes. And it really shouldn't be that. It should really be a doorway to new learning and greater learning experience. And so what I'm hoping is that as you've experienced success with these smaller numbers, that you're working with the greater faculty and administration to increase that success and carry this method and make it available to all of the students who walk through the doors of the science labs.
So, yeah, this has been a big conversation we've had at Northeast, how these ideas can be implemented in some of the other sciences. The anatomy and physiology faculty have looked into making inquiry more a part of the course that they teach, and also we're looking for ways to spread this to the other campuses of the other major biology faculty who are interested. We're, you know, certainly we have at this point modified it enough that we feel like it's pretty much a package that we can bundle up and, and help somebody else deploy as well. At the first, it was pretty rocky, but it's, it's gotten a lot better.
Yes, it's become the norm now, you know, for us.
So one more question for clarification. The students who were engaged in this were majors only?
Yeah, so this was the first course that the majors, science majors take. So there's a biology for science majors and a non-majors course. This is the first course for science majors. And now we've done this in the second semester course, and then the academic cooperative is also a science majors. I think they have to have taken an introductory science course to take that cooperative course.
So, yeah, we're dealing, it's, it's aimed at the, you know, the students that, that have initially identified as wanting to go into the sciences, but, you know, the, the idea is to spread these techniques out to teach all of our science students as appropriate, you know, in the particular field. But this is the right place to start with it.
I agree. I believe that you will find that increasing that to the general population will have a tremendous impact on our overall student success rate. So that's why I'm encouraging it. And if there's anything that I can encourage my board members to do to help you move that forward, I know I can talk them into it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both so very much.
Any other questions, Ms. Ayala?
Yes, I do. I'm sorry, I'm still trying to figure out the mic.
No.
There it is.
Thank you very much. You're doing great work. Just want to find out, how are we measuring the success once they get in the cooperative? I believe is what you said, at that level. Are we getting feedback from them after they've been through this, through this instruction, saying, you know, "These are the things that we've, that we've seen that has been very helpful. These are the things that we probably need to focus on." Are we getting that type of feedback?
Interesting question. I'm not sure I can answer that. This is the first semester that our cooperative course has been deployed, and so the faculty there are definitely thinking about what lessons learned, what can we do better? But in terms of tracking those students, I don't know that they have a strategy for follow-up with the individual students and also see where they go next. I think we would all agree that TCC doesn't do a great job of seeing, you know, once the student leaves and matriculates, we don't always know what happens with them. So I don't know. We know.
So we don't, yeah, we're not collecting that information in an effective way yet, institutionally, but that is certainly one of the things that we need to work on. And not anecdotally, but, you know, on an individual basis, you know, student by student, what we are seeing is, you know, we're getting to watch our students going through these courses, and as Dr. Manus just said, the academic cooperative is just their first semester seeing it, so we'll, we'll see what happens in the future. But also with the summer research projects, seeing that the students are landing in research laboratories at four-year universities and carrying on with that. It's kind of a victory, you know, one person at a time. Of course, we want to do this with all of the students, but, you know, you're really taking each student by the hand and giving them, you know, the, 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 the hand and the leverage to get to where they want to go. And we're seeing success on an individual basis all the way, and it's really, really quite gratifying.
Thank you. Other questions?
Thank you so much.
We appreciate you.
Dr. Gates Black, you're up next.
Thank you, Chancellor Hadley, President Appleman, members of the board. A year ago, you asked us, what was that one big thing that we could implement this academic year that could significantly impact the success of students? And at that time, we talked to you about supplemental instruction. We told you about the success of SI at other institutions, and it was in your wisdom that you agreed to reallocate resources to support the scaling up of supplemental instruction across all of the district. This past fall, we spent time training and hiring folks to implement SI, and this past spring was our first semester. And so I'd now like to introduce Dr. Christopher Darville, the Director of Student Learning and Success, and he's our district leader for SI. He's going to show you a short video, and then we're going to show you the data for our first semester. Dr. Darville?
Thank you, Dr. Black, President Appleman, Chancellor Hadley, and the board. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to present to you the implementation and then also our success to date with supplemental instruction. So I'll go ahead and get into it. The first slide here, I just want to take the opportunity just to give you a brief overview or refresher about supplemental instruction. And supplemental instructions are organized group study sessions. We look to have those led by our students who are SI leaders who have taken those courses previously and earned an A or a B final grade in those difficult courses. The SI leaders are trained rigorously, they plan study sessions, they're available to our students before and after classes, and they also evaluated by our SI coordinators. And our SI leaders attend each class session as well. So our students really, and our faculty also get to really build a great rapport with our supplemental instruction leaders. Just to give you an idea of the scope and the scale of our implementation going into the spring 2015, we hired five campus coordinators. From there, we hired 86 SI leaders. We currently have the capacity to hire 100 SI leaders. We also implemented 113 sections of supplemental instructions, and that gave us the capacity to reach, as you see there, 3,240 students here at TCC. So the next step is the outcomes. How did we do? So as you can see here, this is the spring 2015 SI participation rates. Again, we had 3,240 students who were exposed to supplemental instruction. 2,186 of them chose not to participate, but we did have 1,054 of them that participated. And just so I can give you some context to that, when we look at national data when it comes to participation rates for supplemental instruction, you'll see that it averages around 25, maybe 28 percent. So we are coming out the gate at about a third of our students participating in supplemental instruction semester one, and that's without this, this program being permeated throughout the institution. So that's something that I'm proud of. Now, I'm going to take a moment here to pause and to show you a video, because this reminds me of one of my favorite shows I used to like, like to watch after school, which is called Reading Rainbow. And it would say that you can listen to me, but you don't have to take my word for it. So here's a video that captures our students, our SI leaders and SI coordinators' point of view.
Having an SI for the first time was just wonderful. It was such a great experience.
It starts to get those neurons firing.
It's a constant edification of the material.
How much of a huge benefit it could be to students.
Definitely gave me a different perspective.
I would encourage every student to attend a SI.
SI has made some incredible gains when it comes to student learning and success.
When I talk to people who are unfamiliar with SI, when I'm talking to a freshman or I'm talking to a parent who's curious about the program, it always seems a little bit nebulous. Supplemental instruction, what is this? And I think the best way that I can boil it down and define it is it's the most organized study session you've ever been to, right? Because you think, when you, when you form a study group with your friends, you're all kind of in it together, but no one really knows what's coming, because no one's really been through it before. We take someone who's been through the class before and been successful in it, and we plug them right back into class, and they're the ones leading your study group. And they can plan the right kinds of activities and the right kinds of games and all that kind of stuff to help you move through the class successfully.
Our students, especially in an upper-level science course, like I teach with anatomy and physiology, they struggle a lot. And so I thought as many resources as possible for them would be a good idea.
I think it helps tremendously that it is a peer, that they're like, okay, they understand, if they can be successful, I can be successful.
Not only do they just repeat what's been said by the professor or what's in the book, but they take it and they synthesize that information, they put it into their own language.
It's been proven time and again that if you have regular attendance with SI, then you can get up to a letter grade higher in the course, and on average, a letter grade higher in the course. There was even a few students that were kind of shy at the beginning, and after going to a bunch of the SI sessions, they kind of came out of their shell, because they were building rapport with the SI leader and with the other students that were at the sessions, and so they were able to build relationships too in study groups.
The time that I would spend learning on my private studies and the time I would spend getting the concepts in class, by putting a third avenue in there as SI, it only allowed me to work on that even further. Had I not known about that, I would have spent basically going straight from class and then fumbling on my own trying to understand. I think the focusing mechanism of SI is what really helped keep me in gear and keep me on track.
SI really changes the model in the classroom as opposed to a lecture by that faculty member. So it's allowing the SI leader to play a role in that classroom, and that's, that's different from, from what has traditionally been the case.
There are only three other programs that are larger than us. There is Georgia State, there is Cal Fullerton, and then there is UT San Antonio. And when you think about those other institutions, those are four years. So you think about the incredible commitment and dollars, resources that our board and our chancellor and Dr. Black and the rest of the Kelp member have made to this effort, and I think that needs to be applauded.
Participants in SI programs have consistently demonstrated higher reenrollment and graduation rates, receiving higher final course grades and lower withdrawal rates than non-SI participants. In fact, SI students have shown a remarkable 40% to 50% reduction in D, fail, and withdrawal rates compared to their non-SI classmates in all disciplines, from business, health, humanities, sciences, math, and more. SI students have benefited across the board with improved comprehension, greater classroom participation, and better grades.
It just helps the students build that foundation of what they need to learn, how they, they need to study. There's data that supports that every hour that you spend studying in supplemental instruction equates to two and a half hours studying in isolation.
We're trying to instill in them study skills that are going to make them successful.
The student excitement, I think, was the biggest thing. They loved the SI program.
I can't think of a better way to, to train students to go into the world to work. I can't think of a better way.
Saving time, better grade, and having fun.
I see bonds made through people who come in and that this close bond, and they really help each other, and they stay connected with each other as they go on, and that's just really, sorry, it's just really nice.
Through the lens of our students, through our SI leaders, and also our SI coordinators, I want to take an opportunity just to show you the results from SI. So this chart that you're looking at now represents our comparison of success. We see that our SI participants are those who visited SI. 75% of them were successful compared to almost 60% of those students who did not participate were successful. You also can see that there is a significant reduction in the Ds, Fs, Is, and withdrawal rates there, 25% compared to 40%. Going forward, this is some more data looking at that, just a better view of it. And you can see, again, those students who participated in SI had fewer withdrawals rate, their rates were lower than those who did not participate in SI. This graph here represents the success rates by participation. The first point there is students who did not participate in SI. It was 59.6, almost 60, 60% of them were not successful in those courses that they took that were supported by SI. But as you can see, as our students started to attend SI with more frequency or with greater frequency, the better they perform. When we get to that seven times participated, eight times, and on up to 10 or more times, that 10 or more group, you can see that 91% of them were successful, earning an A, B, or C final course grade. And here, this gives you a snapshot of the courses that we supported during the spring 2015 semester. You can see that we supported a lot of our biologies, economic, English, government history, and math. So what this tells you that we supported heavily our STEM courses, our gateway courses. These are the courses where our students, looking at data, we know they struggle with the most, so we wanted to give them that support. And you can see also in each of these courses that the students who participated in SI, that SI participation group outgained our non-participation group as far as success in those courses. Okay? I know I went through that quickly, but are there any questions?
I know you have a number of your students here. We'd like to meet them.
Yes, ma'am. It is my pleasure to introduce part of our team, our SI team. This could not be done without their work. It is a amount, a crazy amount of work that they have to do with developing their study session plans. And could you guys stand up so everyone can recognize you and just, can we applaud them for their work?
This, this is the above and beyond crowd, right? We'd love for you all to come up and have your picture made with us. Would you do that?
What are you doing there? How do you recruit the student leaders and?
And how do you make the students aware of the availability of the instruction?
So recruitment, there's a multiple-pronged approach to it. We, first, we consult with our faculty members, because we want these SI leaders to have a great relationship with the faculty members. It's important, because they work closely with our faculty, and then plus, if they've taken that faculty member before, then they understand how that faculty member conducts his or her course. The way that we recruit, you can see some of the shirts that they have now, but we've also been working closely with our marketing office, coming up with strategies, so we can get the message out to our students.
To participate in the.
To participate in SI, correct.
And from them, perhaps you will recruit future instructors.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Obviously, we're on the right path.
Thank you.
Okay. Are you all ready?
I tried. There you go.
Always knew we were close.
Okay.
Everybody ready? Make a big smile.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you all giving a part of your evening. Be sure and bring your parking tickets for validation.
Well, actually, I have one final thing on the parking. Ignore everything else I said.
We appreciate you all giving a part of your evening. Be sure and bring your parking tickets for validation.
Well, actually, I have one final thing on the parking. Ignore everything else I said. And take your parking ticket to the police desk now, and they will validate it, and you won't have to worry about money, okay? But before you go, Dr. Darville, I think, did I say that right? Is he walking out the door? Where is he? Okay. I'd like for one of the students to come to the microphone. Anyone you pick out, it doesn't matter. I'm not going to tell you what I want until he gets up here. She... Anna? Oh, okay. Now, see, Anna, I didn't pick you out, did I? No, I didn't. Go to the microphone.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I wanted to talk to the microphone, and it squeaked, and I was just burnt after that.
Hi. I just want you to be very brief and tell the board members why you think this supplemental instruction business is so great.
Okay, I'm going to try to do it without crying. So give me a moment. I wish supplemental instruction had been around when I was doing college algebra because I wouldn't have been bugging my professor for two hours before class. Sorry.
It's okay.
It's given me camaraderie. I have friends. I rode here with them, you know? Sorry. I'm going to a university where I'll still have friends because they'll be with me there. SI has changed me. I'm not a little girl anymore. I'm in college. I'm speaking in front of a board. I have the nerves to get up here and speak in front of a board. You know?
We're harmless.
And it let me know what it means to teach. And I'm not, we're not re-teaching the material, but when you see students, and I know that you guys know this, when it clicks, and that feeling is amazing. And to have all of our leaders who get to experience that and to go on and say, now I know how to teach people things because learning is the biggest thing for us. And we'll never quit learning. And we're teaching them critical thinking skills so when they go out in the workforce, they're not terrified to be in a group project. They're not, they're going to be able to take initiative and do leadership. I mean, that's amazing. Not just our SI leaders, but the students that are in our SI sessions, they're also going to be leaders. So I appreciate all that you guys do for us, and I'm sorry if I took up too much time.
That was fine.
And I appreciate you working with my nervousness.
Thank you so much for the great work that you and all the rest of you do with our students.
Thank you, Madam President.
Yes, sir.
I'm always interested, you know, statistics is one of my things that I've been involved with for a long time, and I'm always interested in the difference between correlation and causation. And this particular thing, by the way, I wish I'd have had supplemental instruction when I was taking Spanish. You know, and when I say, oh, to somebody, they say, oh, you know, I speak Spanish. Yeah, I took it in high school a lot of times. Anyway, my, and I don't doubt this helps, but what we have here is, we have an example of very motivated students going to, taking the supplemental instruction, and students who are not so motivating, not so motivated, taking a pass on it. And so we don't really know what the full impact of it is until we maybe have a test case where every student, maybe you take three or four classes and say you will participate in the supplemental instruction. And then you will have a statistical sample that will give you the true number because right now, you know, obviously, as we're talking, these are much more motivated students. And when you're motivated, you find a way. In this case, they found supplemental instruction, and we were able to give it to them. But I think we probably need to get a little bit more data and see what happens when they all are involved with it. You think? I think so, too.
And so I think you have your marching orders from Mr. Carter, who said that means you're going to increase it and you're going to have some sessions where it's mandatory?
Well, that's certainly something that we, as an organization, would have to talk about based upon this data, is certainly something to consider. And you're right, Mr. Carter, we need to look at not just how the students do in the SI courses they're taking now, but the skills that they learn, how did they do in their next course as well? Because we're teaching them, like Anna said, we're teaching them skills that will go with them wherever they go.
And by the way, that would be statistically valid if you could demonstrate that in the courses after this, that these students have significantly higher performance level because we're home free. I don't doubt that it does. I'm just saying, we probably need to make one more step and go from there.
I agree with you, and I think that while these students were motivated, we were able to have faculty members interested in SI who really were able to say, this will benefit you. Even if the students didn't realize it themselves, we had faculty who knew that this would benefit you if you will participate in SI. If you will go to the SI sessions regularly, you will be more successful. And so that has been proven out with national data. And so this is just an example proving that at Tarrant County College. I don't disagree. I don't know, we're ready to say it's a correlation between SI and the success. But I do say that these students experienced a greater level of success than they would have experienced had we not had SI. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
We'll certainly take on the challenge. It's a big one. It's a big one.
That's a huge jump.
It is.
Those percentages are huge, really.
That's right. They are. Well, thank you, Dr. Gates-Black, Dr. Darville, and especially thank you, students, for the great leadership.
Students, you are welcome to stay with us. We have other business to conduct, but you are also excused if you need to leave. So thank you for coming. We will move on now to approve the minutes of the May 21st meeting. If I could have a motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill, seconded by Mr. Carter. Any additions, corrections? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number seven, committee reports, audit and finance. Mr. Carter.
Hi there. Well, we only have one new audit report. It's traditionally, if we have a new program, particularly if we're going to make a major investment, we will do an audit of that program to make sure everything's okay. And we did that with aviation before we made this fairly substantial alliance investment like that, and they passed that with flying colors. And now the program has been implemented, and so we'll do a second audit. And also, we tend to do an audit when we have new programs. In this particular case, it's flight training, so we'll be taking a look at that as well. That's probably the only two audit items on our agenda.
Thank you. The governance committee prepared the agenda for today, and we do have one item that we will be discussing and voting on after closed session. Institutional planning, Ms. Vandergriff.
We plan to meet next Tuesday, the 23rd, at 4:00.
Dr. Morrison, 50th anniversary celebration.
Thank you, Madam President. You might notice that the board members are wearing 50th anniversary lapel pins, and these were also mailed to members of the Jubilee Steering Committee. And I received a call from Judge L. Clifford Davis saying that he had been proudly wearing his, and it had drawn great commentary. So he says, a lot of people wanted it. These are simply wonderful outward symbols showing our pride in TCC during this anniversary year, and we hope that everyone who receives them will wear them proudly. And we want to thank our wonderful marketing staff for all of the great things they're doing to help us spread the word about our 50th anniversary celebration. And another note, the pictorial history that Dr. Bill Lace has been working on is in the editorial stages, and we expect it to be completed over the next few weeks. And we're really excited and looking forward to the completion of that project. Also, I don't need to remind you to put August 1st on your calendar because we'll be celebrating on Panther Island. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number nine, consideration and approval of equipment, parts, and systems to be installed in 40 classrooms in the amount of $529,565.74.
Mrs. Appleman and board members, I'll remind you that Mr. Marshall is always on top of making sure that he's doing everything that's possible within the confines of his budget to make sure that our students are prepared to be a 21st century worker.
Yes, thank you.
Once they earn those degrees and certificates. So Mr. Marshall has some updates here tonight.
This is for our classroom technology. It's similar to the technology you see in this room. It's the monitors, the projection, the sound systems, and we are doing a 15% to 20% per year refurbishment of all of our classrooms. And this is for this year.
Motion to approve?
I have a question.
Motion to approve first, please.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Greenhill, seconded by Ms. Vandergriff. Discussion. Mr. Greenhill.
You have a comment on your document that says you would like to reserve flexibility in awarding the next low bidder in case the company refuses to acknowledge a partial bid. What do you mean by that? And what would you like us to do in that regard?
Actually, that can, it's kind of like language that comes along with the procurement. We have lots of different parts that we're asking to buy. These come from multiple vendors. And what we put out to the community of vendors is, tell us which ones you can supply us, and then we compare those prices. So one vendor might be able to do a really good job with the monitors, but not so good on the microphones and the sound systems, and another vendor, the exact opposite. They were told in the procurement, the RFP, that we would, if we wanted to, accept a partial bid, and that they would be, you know, if we didn't want to buy everything from you and only buy certain items from you, that you would have to accept that. Sometimes vendors will say, you can only get this price if you buy everything from us. So this is language that basically says, we're reinforcing that item that was in the RFP, that if you bid a specific item at a specific price, we can buy that from you.
But there's nothing, when we approve this, we're giving you that flexibility, right?
You're giving me the flexibility within that dollar amount.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm not going to ask for more money.
No, I'm just, I just want to make sure that you have the authority that you need to have the flexibility that you need.
Mr. Greenhill, I just wanted to add a comment, and we could have Mr. Espinosa. The reason that, and Tim does a great thing, the reason we did that flexibility is because it would save us around 50 to 60, about, I'm sorry, 40K by breaking it out into partials. So that was the philosophy. And the thought about having reject is when you have a partial, in case you don't want to do it, that's okay. Then you can go to somebody else. So there was a savings to the district in what we wanted to do.
Other questions? Mr. Greenhill, does that satisfy your curiosity?
Yes, oh, yes.
Any other questions? Discussion? Mrs. Yoll?
A question, and this may be in here, oh, sorry. Mr. Marshall, just want to verify, so if the, we're doing these by campus, so is this just going to be like a rotating type thing? So once you do these first few campuses, and then we get all the way to Trinity River, then we'll start the process again? Is that how that...
Well, Trinity River was stood up like four and a half years ago.
Right.
So we bought everything new for Trinity River at that time. So its equipment is in better shape. It's not old. The other four campuses have been around for a long, long time, and some of the equipment we replaced last year was over 15 years old. This year, we're in about the seven to eight-year range. So next year, when I come to you for the same conversation, the Trinity River campus will have a number of classrooms in the middle of that mix. So we'll be doing that next year.
So will they be able to communicate? Will all the systems be able to work?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
These are, they're less dependent on the internet. These are the systems that just run inside the classroom.
Okay. Thank you.
Ready for the question? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, also, Mr. Marshall, consideration and approval of agreement with EST Group to purchase Dell Disaster Recovery Storage Area Network in the amount of $304,517.41.
This is, the easiest discussion is, this is to duplicate our critical storage that we have in our data center in our disaster recovery center that's located in Allen, Texas.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Dr. Morrison, second. Mr. Carter, questions? Discussion?
I do. The sort of information that we're backing up is, what, corporate systems?
Yes, this is our student records, our student records, financial information, HR, payroll. With student records comes some historical information with regards to counseling sessions, medical records. This is everything we collect and consider critical information.
Is it a hot-hot type system where if something happens to the systems, it automatically pops up? Or is it, what kind of a system is it?
We have hot-hot within the data center. So if our primary storage fails in the data center, we already have secondary storage. This is if something happens to the data center. So it becomes hot-hot with about a five-minute delay to Allen, Texas. So there is a manual intervention to turn that one because if we put them both on at the same time...
Right.
There's an issue. So we still do have a manual notification process when we go to our disaster recovery. So, yeah. Good question. I like that.
Thank you.
I like talking about hot-hots.
That's why we elected her. You'd have someone who understood what you were talking about.
Probably saw a smile come on my face, and she was like, yes!
Go ahead, have another question.
In my profession, it's called race epiloquature. It speaks for itself.
Oh, you're making me flush here. In the event that we need more storage, what is the process? Because obviously, there's going to be more records that are being developed, and we, right now, we have a moment in time, correct? So did we just figure 10% more?
Oh, no. We, in the old days, it might have been 10%. I'm more of a 25% to 50% more because we are collecting much more robust, I call them blobs, binary large objects with regards to our student records, which means they're now including video and photographs and things of that nature. And we collect that ourselves, too, just what you're seeing from our photographers. It's amazing what our storage concerns are. We have a tiered storage environment where we have things that are critical and things that are not.
Right.
So as we buy new critical storage, we roll that storage back into the secondary tiers. We're probably, probably about the 30% capacity where I still have that much capacity. Again, that's a lot of terabytes, though.
Right. Is it less expensive the more terabytes that we're buying? Or is it, in other words, the more storage you're buying, are we getting a better rate?
It depends on the type of storage. This storage is critical storage. This is the high speed for data disaster recovery. If we were, the good thing is it's always falling, but it's still, the tiered storage depends on, at what point in time am I adding more? I can't ever tell you that it's going to be cheaper than the time I come to you. This is very easy. It's planned. It's a large block. And if you see, the DIR has, the DIR is the State Department of Information Resources. Their contract with Dell that we could have bought off of for this equipment was $533,000. But because the price of storage falls so fast, that was probably negotiated six to nine months ago, we were able to go to the same vendor community and say, I know what the DIR price is, tell me what I can do that's better than that. And you can do that only at certain times. We were buying a large block of storage, and that's why. But if I said I just need one little array, I wouldn't be able to get that type of price.
And I just have one final question. How do we, is there some sort of requirement, state requirement, or a requirement that we have to have a certain amount of storage? And are we, where are we within that requirement?
The state requirement just says that whatever we have in our data center, we have in our disaster recovery center. They don't say a percentage. They just basically say, you must duplicate what you have. I think we quoted it somewhere in there. They're kind of, I'm not going to say generic, but they're not going to, they don't typically get into a quantitative measure when they're talking about disaster recovery.
Other questions?
It's just that if you don't have the resources to determine what's important to back up, and you have a disaster, you're in big trouble. That's why, another reason why Tim Marshall is here.
Yes. We didn't have one of these when I got here, just three short years ago. It was surprising.
Yeah. We are glad you're here. And now I would ask for approval of his recommendation. All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 11, consideration and approval of an amendment to TIF number 10, participation agreement to include TIF number 10A. Mr. McLendon.
Good evening, Madam Chancellor, Madam Chairman, trustees. The city of Fort Worth is coming to request the TCC Board of Directors to consider the approval of the TCC participation agreement for the expanded area within 10 TIF, TIF 10, considered Lone Star Cabela's TIF. There are no retroactive... There are no retroactive payments, and the estimated initial cost will be nine point one K. Other tax and entities have already approved them, the city, the county, and the water district. The district recommends to the chancellor and her board this request. Proposed modifications and draft amendments have been reviewed. I'd like to invite Ms. Carol Griffith from the Business Community Development Center of the Economic Development Department of Fort Worth to make a presentation, and she will address any questions that you have.
Welcome, Ms. Griffith.
Thank you. I just have a few, I just have a few quick slides, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions. The purpose of the presentation is just to provide you any information that you need in order to make this decision to participate in the expanded area of the TIF ten, which is Lone Star Cabela's. As you probably know, the purpose of TIF ten was to provide funding for infrastructure and a public space within Cabela's, a retail facility. The TIF district will terminate in 2025. Participation agreements for the initial TIF were signed in 2004, and Tarrant County College signed in at a fifty percent participation rate, meaning that fifty percent of the tax increment generated by this facility would go into the TIF district. Basically, the city created a Lone Star Local Government Corporation, which issued bonds to pay for this infrastructure that surrounds Cabela's. Some of it was stormwater, some streets, that sort of thing. And then, Cabela's purchased the bonds, and now the TIF funding is used to pay them off. Only the amount generated by the TIF, which is mostly Cabela's itself, will be used to pay off the bonds. So, in the end, if the TIF doesn't raise enough money, that's all Cabela's gets toward those bonds. That was the deal they made. They felt like they would be able to generate enough taxes surrounding their area and buy their store that they would be able to pay off the bonds. That was the gamble. So, the reason that we're here today asking you to participate in the expansion is basically that it was really part of the initial agreement, and we feel like this was an oversight. We should have been here a few years ago, and we just are kind of cleaning up what we have in place. This shows you the annexed area. When the TIF was created, that square was not part of the city of Fort Worth, and therefore it could not be included in the TIF. And part of the deal was that the city of Fort Worth would do the best they could to annex it and then include it in the TIF. Here's the next five years estimated. The funding that is generated by the TIF is tracked separately for the initial area and then for the expanded area, and that's because they have two different base years. And so, you'll always be able to see how much you can, you are contributing for each one. So, next five years, we think that this is our estimate, but about twenty-three thousand a year is what Tarrant County College will be contributing to the TIF as it stands. And then underneath that, you can see that this little piece, it's not a lot of money. We just feel like, okay, we should do what we said. It's seven thousand bucks a year. So, here's the request for approval, and we're asking that you approve amendment number one to add the expansion area to the Tarrant County College District Participation Agreement for Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Ten, city of Fort Worth, Texas, at the current participation rate of fifty percent. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Motion, excuse me, motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Greenhill, second. Sir, second to the motion. Ms. Vandergriff, discussion. I always feel like I need to explain to anyone who's new in the audience, we have had this information before us in our board packets for a number of days. So, all of the things that we're, we seem to be voting on quickly, we have had the data at our, on our desk for some time. So, anyway, what questions does anyone have about the TIF?
I just have one question. It's a general question, just out of curiosity, because we've limited our, our participation to a certain extent. How many TIFs now are there in Fort Worth?
There are now twelve. The latest one is the Stockyards, and it's just being formed.
And we have just appointed Mr. Carter to represent us.
Yes.
Lucky Mr. Carter.
Yeah, I think Mr. Yala is also going to be the city.
Yes. Coincidentally, she was invited just today, I think, to represent her neighborhood, I guess, in a way, too. So, we'll have two watchdogs on that TIF.
That's good.
What other questions? Back to TIF number ten.
So, I have a question.
Uh-huh.
Has the taxing been sufficient to pay the bonds?
It actually has not, and I can get you additional data, but because of the way the deal was structured, that's what Cabela's has to accept.
Okay. Just curious.
Yeah.
Call a question?
Other question, other questions or discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you for being with us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith. Item number twelve, consideration and approval of an amendment to TIF number eight, participation agreement. Mr. McLendon.
City of Fort Worth has come in to request TCC Board of Directors to consider an amendment to the TIF eight. In this kind, in this case, I'm really happy. It's a reduc, well, I'm not happy. It happens to be a reduction. TCC participation rate from eighty percent to forty percent. The initial estimated annual reduce in contribution will be two hundred K per year. Other tax and entities have already approved this previously, the city, the county, and the water district. The district recommends to the chancellor and her board to consider this request. Proposed modifications and draft amendments have been reviewed, and I'd like to invite Mr. Michael Henning from the Business Development Center and Economics Department for the city of Fort Worth. He will make a presentation and would love to address any questions that you might have.
Welcome. Glad to have you.
Thank you, Chancellor. Good evening, President Obama, the board. Again, my name is Michael Henning, and I'm with the city of Fort Worth Economic Development Department, and I've got the pleasure this evening of asking you to pay less.
We like that.
We have to celebrate these moments in case we ever come back here to ask you to invest more.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So, just to provide a little bit of background on the TIF itself, it was originally formed in 2004, and the initial participation agreement with the district was struck in 2003, and most recently, toward the end of 2014, the project and financing plan, the overall guiding document of the TIF, was amended in order to address a few constraints that were inhibiting us from being able to really fully advance the purpose of the TIF, which is the full revitalization of Lancaster corridor. So, just to provide an overview of exactly the boundaries of the district, it includes predominantly the area of southern downtown Fort Worth, and most of the efforts have been focused along, of course, Lancaster corridor. The reason why we're able to come here and ask you tonight to reduce your participation is because the TIF has performed very well. As you can see here, we're currently about halfway through the life of the TIF. As the years progress, even with the reduced participation rates, we anticipate that we will have enough resources to be able to accomplish the goals that we do have for the area. If the historic performance of the, of the TIF district financially is any indication, then certainly, we may have more resources to work with, but our current projections, which we believe to be fairly conservative, are, certainly support the idea, the idea of going ahead and being able to support this reduction. So, as Mr. McLendon pointed out, the reduction would be from eighty percent to a forty percent participation rate. And in addition to that, we will be capping the district's contribution to the TIF at seven million dollars throughout the course of, throughout the lifetime of the TIF, inclusive of any funds contributed to this point. All other terms of the participation agreement will remain the same. And the TIF, I just mentioned a moment ago, we're about halfway through. We've got about ten years left in the TIF. We do not anticipate that the life of the TIF will be extended, but just in case it's ever contemplated that the TIF could be extended, I just want to go ahead and point out that that would require prior approval by, by yourselves in order for you, for you to continue to participate in any extended TIF that might exist longer. So, taking a look at how this will compare year over year, the first, that middle column there, you'll see the revenues that have been collected for this fiscal year from 2015 that are based off of tax, the tax year 2014. And you'll see that we're actually going to be reducing from a contribution of four hundred thousand dollars to a projected two hundred and six thousand dollars, the remainder of which will be able to be retained. Now, you are, we're already retaining twenty percent annually of any increment above the base value, and so now, with the reduction, you will be retaining three hundred and nine thousand dollars annually beginning this coming year. So, a quick look at how this is compared versus some of the other entities that are participating in this TIF. This is a look at all of the contributions to date, the gray being the base taxes, and everything in green there or in blue is the increment, the amount of tax value over and above the taxes, the tax value of the district when it was first created. And so, for those, for those participants that were not participating at a hundred percent, which would include the Tarrant County College District and then Tarrant County, the portion in blue there was being retained. This takes a look at next year, how this will break down in terms of what is being contributed to the TIF versus what is being retained. And throughout the course of the lifetime of the TIF, these are what we're currently projecting to be the final numbers of what will be contributed to the TIF versus what will be retained. So, just to wrap up, in terms of the, where we go from here, there is a proposal in front of you regarding, regarding the amendment to the existing participation rate to reduce these, the rate from eighty percent to forty percent, and to institute the cap of seven million dollars. That rate reduction would go into effect this tax year, which, so you would actually see an impact from revenue standpoint next fiscal year. And then, of course, we will continue to do all that we can to make the Lancaster TIF a success. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions, Mr. Henning?
I have just, just one question. I'm, we have a great deal of state-run entities in our TIF. For example, UTA, We're One, Texas A&amp;M University School of Law. How does that impact this particular TIF in your projections on what kind of money will come out of this? I mean, I think Texas A&amp;M is going to stay where it is, and it's got three parking lots that it'll probably build on. So, what is your view on that?
Yes, and you bring up an excellent point. One of the interesting things about this particular part of the city of Fort Worth is that there are a number of tax-exempt properties interwoven throughout the district. And so, while some of those properties have, have come back onto the tax rolls, a number of them will remain exempt. Those are factored into the projections. We, we back all of that out. We don't include any of those in the projections. And so, we are just basing that growth off of what we know today is currently taxable properties. Now, there are a number of parcels that we are currently working on that are actually owned by the city of Fort Worth along Lancaster that resulted from the realignment of the I-30 Overpass. It used to be part of the street, and now it's actually land that is, that is developable. And so, while the city currently owns that, we are taking steps to try and develop those, those parcels to bring it onto the tax rolls and not only increase the value from, from a tax revenue standpoint, but also to reactivate this corridor.
Who now owns the, the old post office? Is that still the federal government?
That is still the federal government.
Okay, thank you.
And all of this development that's occurring to the west of us on Lancaster, that's city-owned property?
The dirt that you're seeing turned right now is actually, that is one of the parcels I was speaking of that was, that had resulted from this realignment. Now, because of the additional space that is available for development, there's been a project that we've been able to participate in where the city is actually acting as the developer in this particular case, and the TIF has also contributed toward this particular development, particularly when it comes to the garage supporting this, and will also support surrounding development.
What, what is the project? It's been defined, housing, some retail?
Yes, it is a mixed-use project. It'll be about twenty thousand square feet of retail, about, I believe, two hundred units of multifamily, and then, I believe, a three hundred space, I'm sorry, four hundred space garage.
I'm sorry.
About a four hundred space garage.
Garage.
Yes. So, we're, we're very excited to see that one moving now, and our hope is to continue to see other development come to the area.
Motion to approve the recommendation to decrease our participation in TIF number eight. Dr. Morrison, second. Ms. Vandergriff, any other questions or discussion?
So, Mr. Roddy.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Henning.
Thank you.
Monthly financial report.
Good evening, again. Okay, again, as we look at, we look at revenue and expense, we are in the ninth month, so that would be nine-twelfths or seventy-nine, seventy-five percent. So, we're going to look at expenditures, cost of revenue, that are greater than eighty-five percent. So, if we look at state appropriations, you'll see that it's about seventy-two percent. Not to worry. This is really according to the distribution schedule, so we're okay with that. We're expecting that. If you look at your investment return on two hundred and twelve, that again is, we always make that, that comment available, that's a mark-to-market, that's a monthly adjustment, that, that just shows that it number's so high. That's something that US GAAP, GSB and GAAP have asked us, so that's an entry that is showing there. But if you look at your total revenue right there on the bottom, it's showing at ninety percent, which is better than eighty-five, so we're, we're happy with that. All right? So, now, we want to go to the cost part of it. Okay. If we look at our total expenditures, they're looking at seventy-nine, at seventy-six percent. We should be at seventy-five percent, so we're okay. It's just slightly higher. We can deal with a one percent increase. We also want to, we always mention that a lot of these, some of these expenditures have encumbrances for more than one period. There's also prepaid's in there, and there are payments that are for more than, than a fiscal calendar. So, I think that being with, with those scenarios, seventy-one percent higher is, is okay. It's actually pretty good. All right? We would like to go to the investment pages. Okay, this is our investment report for May 31st, and so if we look at the pools, we had a beginning balance, no, not too high, just right there. Okay, we have a beginning balance of a hundred and forty mil. We had a decrease of forty-one, so that gives us a ending balance of a hundred. And so, that's, the way that our cycle of cash flow runs is that we're producing money, and towards the end is when you're going to start seeing the, the morgue of the consumption, because you have, what happens, Trustee Yala, is that the way that the money, you have a lot of money that comes in, it's coming in for two areas. The first area is when you have tuition, it's coming in on those cycles. So, you would see the month of August, you have all that tuition for the fall, and then you would see in the month of December, you're going to see a lot of money for the beginning of that cycle. Now, the task, tax investments that's coming from our property taxes, it's coming into certain months, and our state appropriation it comes. So, they're very predictable. This is the, probably the most predictable organization I've ever been with revenue that we know exactly it's coming, it's coming from the state of Texas, it's coming from tax guarantee. So, I, I really have very little concern on the revenue side of the equation. It is one of the most highly predictable scenarios that I've had to experience. So, now, if we look at our short term, we look at, we have a beginning balance of twenty million. We went ahead and we purchased thirty more million in new investments, and we have an ending balance. And again, the short term is, it gives us a little slightly higher than our pool cash, but it's really from a thirty to a hundred and twenty days. So, we move it into those instruments, and then when we need it, we'll pull it out as we need that cash. Then, if we look at our securities, we had a beginning balance of a hundred and thirty. We have one security that was called from the Mortgage Association. What happens with the long-term securities? They come and they offer us a high percentage, and then they call them ahead of time, and that's just the way the market goes. So, we'd like to have things on a higher interest rate, well, higher than, than these other rates, knowing that the, the rates are a little bit lower than they have been in, for a long time. So, that gives us an ending balance of a hundred and twenty million dollars. So, that gives us an ending balance of 120 million dollars. Our total cash right now is about 209 mil. And if we look at the spread on the, for 13 weeks, it's about 49%. If we look at the spread on the 22th, it's about 42, 41%. Any questions?
Questions to Mr. McLendon?
I don't have any questions, but I, I've noticed that for the last two months, about every second or third day, the Wall Street Journal will have an article about how the feds are going to slowly increase interest rates. They still haven't done it, but there was another article today about how they plan to slowly phase in interest rates. And I think we can play with this all we want, but until that actually starts to happen, there's not going to be any big bang for this stuff.
Yes, yes, sir. Mr. Carter, you are exactly right. I always ask people, take a look at Greece. Greece can have a, an effect on the European market and that will rebound to us, but I'm, that's, we'll have to wait to what the Fed does. You're, you're 100% correct.
Mr. McLendon, the, you mentioned around the expenses, there were some prepaid's. Could you go over that list again with those expenses that you said high level, there were some prepaid's, I think?
Well, for example, let's say, what I mean by a prepaid is we may pay for a whole insurance policy and that's a prepaid. And see, what we're doing here, Ms. Ayala, is we do, we use modified accrual accounting. So, that means you go ahead and you take that total encumbrance or that total payment instead of GAAP accounting. If you use accrual accounting, our financial statement would, would change every month. And modified, that's why you see these large encumbrances. That's why I, if I pay for an entire policy or if Mr. Marshall buys a license, that total encumbrance shows because it, in a fund 10, which is our operating fund, we can never consume more than what we have. But in a, for a profit company, you could have a gain or a loss. We would never, well, we should never and I, I'm saying that there's always, it's very, highly unlikely, but that's the whole idea of modified accrual is so that not-for-profits would never consume more money that they have. And that's the way the model is built and it's just a different accounting system.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. McLendon. I think we're ready for the chancellor's report.
Mrs. Appleman and board members, just a few things that I want to point out for you from my report in, in particular. And I'm going to just be very brief on this because I know the trustees are just bursting at the seams to talk about the Spirit of Enterprise Award. But before you get to say that, since I came first on the agenda...
I knew that you would come.
I'm not going to steal your thunder. No, I'm not going to. I, I just want to say how appropriate I think it is and how much we appreciate the honor and recognition during our 50th anniversary of service to Tarrant County College District. And also, it gives me an opportunity to say something that I put in writing the other day, that I want to give a special, as the young folks say, a special shout-out. That is still an in-vogue word, isn't it? You know, by the time I pick up on the word, it's gone. It's, you know, it's long gone, but I think it's still, a shout-out is good. Want to give a special shout-out to Mr. Bill Greenhill for taking advantage of time and on his personal time to think about Tarrant County College and, and mention all the wonderful things that TCC does, got plenty to see in, in an ear when he was on vacation. And the person came back and said, "Well, I think it's a good idea that TCC should be a nominee," but the reason I'm not going to tell you that...
You don't tell them how, how, do they really want to know the story how it happened?
No, 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 no.
You're not going to tell them? We can show them the picture.
No, no, I'm not going to tell that part, Mr. Greenhill. What I'm going to say is this, and the only reason I said that was because I wanted to say this. I was told by one of the chamber executives that when TCC's name was mentioned as a nominee for the Spirit of Enterprise Award, everybody else just kind of said, "Oh, well, I won't mention my nominee. Well, oh, I won't mention my nominee." That's how much reverence they had for Tarrant County College and what we have done. And as I told all the employees in the email that I sent, I mean, everybody who works here is responsible for our having gotten that award. It's, it's been 50 years in the making and a lot of people who are responsible for our being where we are today are no longer here. Many of them have long since left the college, some of them are, are deceased, a lot of things. But so many people gave so much to this institution. And from day one, when the Board of Trustees hired Dr. Joe B. Rushing to be the founding chancellor of Tarrant County College, this institution has always been on a trajectory that just was going in that direction. And 50 years after the voters went to the polls to vote to start a junior college because the people in Tarrant County needed a junior college so that they could all go and get those first two years of a baccalaureate degree. And that's basically what they talked about. However, Dr. Rushing came in and immediately knew, Mrs. Appleman, that in order for Tarrant County Junior College to be the kind of institution that he wanted to see and that he was going to convince other board members you needed, was to add workforce development. We didn't call it that at that point. We called it other things. We generally in those days were calling it vocational education, vocational training. So, from day one, the college has always had vocational training and now we call it workforce development. Now, some people will say the primary reason why we received the Spirit of Enterprise Award is because of all the wonderful things we do with workforce development and that's true. However, I always hasten to say, anytime the Fort Worth Chamber of Commerce or the city of Fort Worth is working with out-of-state, out-of-country companies to convince them to come to Fort Worth, they also want to know about the educational system that's here. They're concerned about the workforce, but they're also concerned about whether or not their employees' children and employees' children's children can get a good, affordable education and Tarrant County College is also good for that. So, it was a combination of those two things, I know, that led, well, I hope, I wasn't in the room, of course, I hope was a unanimous decision, surely it had to be unanimous, for Tarrant County College to receive the Spirit of Enterprise Award. It's, it's amazing, I think, that, that we were recognized in such a way. And it was a wonderful, wonderful day at the luncheon when we received the award and you could just tell all the warmth and the outpouring of appreciation even for, for our college. At the reception, I was speaking with one of our very prominent citizens who was congratulating me on Tarrant County College having gotten the award. And he said, "Well, you sure did help us out a lot because from that little knucklehead son of mine, didn't quite understand why he went off wherever he went to college. He thought he went to have a good time and play and do all of that." And he ended up flunking out and having to come back home because we told him we weren't going to pay for him to have all that fun. And he had to come to Tarrant County College. He said, "He didn't want to come. I don't want to go to TCC. I don't want to go." He said, "But he got here and boy, you all put it to him. Is he a believer now? He knows now that TCC is a real college." I hear that all the time. I hear it all the time from people and that's as good a testimony, I think, to what we do here at TCC as what we do with our workforce things. We have to have both. We have to have a very comprehensive offering, set of offerings for Tarrant County College. I think people are also very impressed by that video, Success by the Numbers, Suzanne. I think everywhere we go and show that, people are always, "Oh, my goodness, I didn't know that. Oh, I didn't know that. I didn't know that." But they're, they're just as impressed to know that we have these outstanding programs for people who are over 50 as they are to know that we have programs for kids that we teach how to swim when they're very young and we, all these college-for-kids programs. We have a lot about which we can toot our horns and I think we should do, you know, I toot, 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 toot everywhere I go. And I invite everybody else to toot, toot. I even have Angela Robinson asking people in the grocery store if they're in school. My, my goal is to have everybody, when you see somebody who looks like he or she may not be going to school, ask them, "Are you there?" That was the main thing I wanted to point out. And, and so, all the rest of the thunder, Ms. Appleman, belongs to the board members. But the other thing that I wanted to call your attention to, we don't do campus accolades in the summer, so that's just on there as a placeholder, but I did want to call your attention to a few of the marketing pieces that you see in the back of your book. If you haven't had time to read those, please, some of these weekends or nights or whatever when you have time, take a look at so you can see what 50 looks like. I love that. Don't you like that? This is what 50 looks like. But I want to point out in particular Adrian Rodriguez, who is 39-year-old superstar, who is the vice...
Alex, do you have, can you scroll forward because we don't, we did not get this.
Oh, you didn't get this this time?
Go to that section.
Oh, okay.
By the way, this is Alex's, I think, first time to keep up with us and she's doing a great job here.
Second time. Thank you, Alex. Is he that far down? That one?
Go, Adrian. He's not quite 50.
Well, it's 40 under 40, you know.
Yeah, I know it, I know.
But Adrian is a superstar and has been since he came to Tarrant County College. He's one of the founding administrators. So, that would make him very, very young when he came, like somewhere around 33.
12.
When he came to TCC, but he does an absolutely outstanding job. And the business press gets a lot of recommendations and nominations to honor the young people in our community, 40 under 40, and so we want to play a special tribute to Adrian for that. Also, I suppose we have Suzanne Petrow to thank for the Fort Worth Avocados, do we not? You negotiated that deal for us, that's the soccer team that TCC, I mentioned it, I think, last month and month before last. We own their jerseys. We, we own, is that one bill that you've got?
I got one.
Yeah, see, well, their shirts have got Tarrant County College on it. It doesn't say Southeast Campus, does it?
No.
Very good. But that's very good for us to, to have our name on their jerseys running around everywhere they go. I want to give a special thanks to Northwest Campus for hosting the World War II Women, Female Pilots, week before last, I guess it was. That was very, very nice for us. And the last thing I want to mention, there's a little article in there, but just to give you a heads-up, last May the 15th, when we had our graduation, probably marked the last time that we can have one graduation, it's probably over with. Mrs. Ayala, you didn't get to sit on the stage for just one, you'd have to do two. We've been talking about this for a long time and we've been growing to this point. It was the worst that it's ever been as far as our constituents are concerned. We had a lot of people who came to graduation and couldn't get in and they were not happy about that. We had some students, is that right, David?
The students also.
All the students got in.
Just family members.
Just the family members that didn't get in. So, all the students did finally get in. Some of them were very late because of the traffic and all of that. So, the CEP members and I have been talking about this for probably, what, three, four years. We knew this date was coming. We aren't really surprised and I've been fighting the idea of having more than one graduation. So, I told them the other day, I said, "You know, when I get it, I've got it." And I've got it now. We, we, we won't be able to have one graduation. So, we've all agreed at this point that we'll have two graduations on the same day. And I don't remember the date, David. You will remember the date.
Monday, May 16.
Monday, May 16. That's a little bit later than what we'd like to have it, but we think that's the most fitting day. Our faculty members will have finished up the weekend before, but we know the love for the students is so strong that they'll come back on Monday. We'll have two, we'll have one. At what time did we set, David?
Still working on that.
We still working on time, but we'll have like two and a half hours between the two and that would be an opportunity for us to feed people and, you know, let them relax a little bit and then we'll start the next time. So, let's just say we start our first one at 10 o'clock in the morning and it'll be over, say, by 11:30. So, then we'll start the next one at 1:30 and it'll be over, say, by 3:00. So, that's what, there is no place in Tarrant County that will hold all of us and our constituents. There's no place. Well, that is, we've grown to that point. Of course, when the new facility is built over there at Will Rogers, I told you all before, they, they promised if I would campaign for it, TCC would have a place wherever they have graduation and we wouldn't have any issue. I'm kidding about the campaigning part.
No, you're not.
But, but we are looking forward to that so that we'll have that, that space. Any board members have any questions about anything to recommend to us on how we go about transitioning to this?
Just put the campuses up. Have to start with campuses and then the other rest of it.
We, well, it's not as easy as it sounds. We talked about that.
Yeah, you're right. You have students to go to different ones.
Yes, yes. And not only that, it's difficult to manage who's going to come. So, we thought what we would do, I think is what we decided, CEP members, we would just, we'd have X number of slots and when they are filled, you go to the next one. That's, that's what we thought would be the...
First come, first served.
First come, first served on that first session and then everybody else would go to the second session. What did, what did we say, Dr. LeBlanc?
They could pick also because some may want the...
I was going to say, it's, I was just thinking, yeah, if they, just let them choose which session.
Right. And when the first one is filled, it's filled.
Then, it's too late.
David, you want to go to the microphone?
Yeah. I was just going to say that the, the times that you presented, would you consider doing an afternoon, 2 o'clock, and then with space in between for after-work?
We'll consider whatever you say. Absolutely.
Well, I just, because it's a Monday.
An after-school.
And if someone's working.
And maybe we said that. We talked about all kinds of times. Maybe we said the later one would start like at 5 o'clock or 6 o'clock or whatever.
We still have some work to do on the proposal. If you look at the distribution of graduates that attend, 55% are from the AA program. So, that may be the cleanest, easiest way to divide up the different ceremonies. Everybody who's an AA graduate attend one ceremony, all the other students attend another, but we've been...
I would never do that, David.
Pretty busy with everything going on.
I would never agree to that. I, I have this philosophy that to the extent possible, we should never bifurcate degrees, certificates and those kind of things. I, I would never agree to that. I don't want any student or any parent thinking that his or her child's or whatever credential with us is less than somebody else's. So, I, I know you all talked about that. It never came to me because I would have said it privately, but since it came publicly...
It's just a clean number, that percentage distribution.
Yeah, yeah. But see, the distrib, who gets a degree or certificate doesn't matter, really. It really does not matter to any of us, who's walking across the stage.
Right, but the distribution as far as having the right number of students attend the two different ceremonies, that 55% breakdown was good and clean, but...
Yeah, yeah.
We also talked a little bit about, we don't want to...
Can you get closer to the mic?
We don't want to, as a committee, we didn't want to leave it to student choice going into two ceremonies, so we do want to have a formula of some sort, whether that's even, you know, obviously not what we just suggested, but maybe looking at home campuses where, you know, we're splitting the, the campuses or some such or even alphabetically, but if we just allow it to be, you know, who shows up for the first or signs up for the first and who signs up for the second, it just becomes logistically difficult with the programs and other pieces that we would want to be organized.
Board members, the graduation committee always sees, the committee sees things much more complicated than I do.
So, we'd say to say there's a lot of work to be done because the, that's a school day for public schools and so that would also be consideration. So, I just throw that in the mix for you to think about and talk about.
There's always a school day for them, though, Dr. Morrison.
I understand that, but it's always been after school.
Yes.
By the way, the Monday, May 16th was the only day that the facility was available.
That's right.
Had to go with that Monday.
So, that's important.
Yeah.
The convention center.
Convention center. Something else, Suzanne?
I was, I think the subsequent Sunday was available, but that's so late, it's so far past when kids would be out of, out of school and finished that we thought...
Yeah, that following, like Sunday past the 16th, right? Yeah, we thought that was way too late. Way too late. What do you think, JCC, that's way too late? Say yes.
It's your career.
Because the contract's already signed.
No, I was, I was just asking them to agree with me, that's all. That's way too late, right? Okay. Any other questions, board members? This is... This is, this is exciting, isn't it? I mean, we've outgrown our facility.
I do have a question. What sort of feedback have we gotten from the students themselves as to what they would like to, or does it matter either to them at all?
The main feedback was have more than one ceremony. You're taking too long. It's too many people that are showing up. There isn't enough room. That was the main feedback that we were getting. Then there was some other feedback about issues that we had with the transportation from our Trinity River Campus to the commencement ceremony, to the convention center.
Logistical type things, I see.
Just logistical things. But the main thing was too big, too many, too long. What can you do to make that different? And that's part of where the two ceremonies recommendation is coming from.
And what we know generally about graduations is that that's a signal moment in the life of a person and a family. And they'll make the necessary adjustments to participate, so.
Right.
So you might already go ahead and look at the date for 2017 because I don't think that the, your new building will be ready.
Yeah, they stay ahead of, on the dates.
Good.
They do. It's just that you have to know that just because we have a date locked down doesn't necessarily mean we'll get to keep it.
Right, I understand that.
Okay. Sometimes we get bumped.
Bumped.
There's provisions about the size of a convention that may be available during the same day. And that's part of how we got bumped this coming year.
Right.
Good point.
Absolutely.
Well, if your jobs were easy, it'd be boring. That's right.
Any other questions or suggestions for our graduation committee? You're talking to the main two people here.
I do agree that probably it's too much hassle to say, sign up for one. Just tell them this is when your graduation is. And that, and that way you've got it. And a lot of, a lot of the students opt not, not to attend anyway, so.
And aren't we glad?
We're glad, so. I do think if you have one at night, you're going to have a huge bunch of students who'd rather do that because it's not only, it's not only they're working, their parents are working, that sort of thing during the day. So we're probably going to have a lighter turnout anyway.
And the larger universities do college graduations within the university and then the large graduation at night, which this year got blown away. So it, it may be that associate of arts degree might be the way to go and then-
Nope.
Nope, you don't like that either. Okay.
I don't see any reason why we need to do that.
That's what we have.
That's, I was trying to carve it down to interest area, so to speak.
That's what you'll have if you just leave it. I mean, you know, the universities are so different, you know, the, the College of Business, the College of-
Liberal Arts.
Liberal Arts, the College of-
Engineering.
Engineering, and you have all these people with all these interests and all these other things. And you don't have that same level of interest and buy, they'll even know, the people who are coming to graduation, many instances, don't even get the difference between an associate of arts in teaching, I think they'll get that one, and associate of applied science and associate of arts degree. I mean, you know, it's, I don't, I don't like the idea of that kind of bifurcation at all. But if you all talk me out of it, I guess I could be talked out of it.
I doubt it.
We'll put the proposal together with different options.
We'll look forward to it.
That's all I have, Madam President. Let's see what questions for them.
Well, thank you and, and thank you, Suzanne and David.
Yes, ma'am.
And we envy your position.
Well, they've done an absolutely outstanding job with, with graduations. They've added a number of features that really have added to the ambiance of what we do. So gives me an opportunity to publicly thank you and all the rest of the committee members.
Luckily, we on the stage had no idea of all the drama going on behind the scenes. We could see the chairs being brought in, so we knew there were unexpected numbers. But we didn't know about the locked doors and parents and family who couldn't get in. And I was just glad that some semblance of family, I, I thought there were some students on this, being graduated and someone else's parents in the audience. But it's a shame that some of those parents and family couldn't participate.
It really is.
So that, that is the tipping point.
We didn't call our police to send anybody to jail either because they were loud, so we got past that.
So back to the Fort Worth Chamber Luncheon and our wonderful plaque. Many of you attended. If you would like to comment on it, the chancellor and I got to dress up and accept the plaque, but it, we understand it. We were there on your behalf and certainly you were the ones who made it possible. And we thank you and we share the pride with you. Any of the others who were at the luncheon want to comment?
Well, I'll just say that it was such an honor and everything that the chancellor had, had talked about, it was clearly validation and a testament to the hard work the last 50 years, literally. But on the flip side, what I noticed is I think we introduced ourselves to a huge number of people. And the video, again, captured so much that I had people coming up like we had no idea. And so, so many people who live in different parts, well, mostly here we're Fort Worth, but it is a business environment. So people are traveling from around this area. So they see their campus locally and really don't have a concept of the scope and breadth of all that we do. So it was just, it was great all around. And the chancellor and Mrs. Appleman did a terrific job presenting and we sitting in the tables were just cheering and it was great. It was great.
The chancellor's comments, as always, were excellent. And she was beautiful. And I can't believe you don't have a picture. I mean, if there was one, I didn't see it.
It's in that-
It's in the book?
What it looks like to be 50, there's a photo of-
Make sure you put it on the website.
Yeah. We, we got a lot of mileage out of that award. We showed up in several publications, online, hard copy. It was a good day for TCC and we had some folks in the audience, I think Dr. Felkerson said she heard people say, I had no idea they had all that going on over there.
Another, we all, we sat at a, I guess it was the elected officials table, I was, but we had several legislators there. And that was important.
That's good.
Really important. I mean, they, some of them were, were pretty surprised at what we do. So that helped.
Alex, go back to that piece you had and if you'll scroll to the top of it. This is a piece I picked up at the Workforce Board meeting this couple of weeks ago. And it's a, a large grant from JP Morgan Chase for the Metroplex.
Not a grant.
And there it is. If you'll scroll down just a little bit to the top portion of it, I'm sorry, there you go. The $250 million over a five-year period to help us across the Metroplex with career curriculums. And we highlighted the Tarrant County folks who were involved, Cynthia Fisher-Miller from Chamber of Commerce, Betty Harvey from the Chamber, our own Frederick Smith. And so we're, we're right in the middle of that and that's a really impressive, broad-based initiative. Mr. Carter and I were in San Antonio for the Community College Association of Texas Trustees, and I've asked him to report on some of the items that were discussed there. And I think, Alex, you have that package?
Yeah, I, I, we did so much, there was so much data there, I kind of hesitated to try to adequately cover it also. What we've done is we're going to scroll it on the screen and then you can look it up on the internet at your, at your convenience. I hated going because I meant that I would miss the chancellor's birthday. There was a rumor she was 50, hit the big 5-0, and didn't get any cake or, or anything. So happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you.
Another, this was kind of interesting in some ways because there was, one of the things that, that, one of the first speakers talked about was how terribly many programs there were for academic achievement. And they ran them up on the screen. There was 30 or 40, but you scroll it and it just keeps on going down and down. And his point was that you use an enormous amount of academic talent for all these programs. And then many of them are funded, then the funding runs, the funding runs out, the program ends. And so you not only have no result from it, you have basically taken some of your best people to do that. So the, I guess the two main themes were, one, simplify, 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 go with what works, cut these things down. Two, and use databases, use databases, use databases over and over again. So they're really talking about redesigning the system to get more results. And they cited five different community colleges as having, as being a good example of those. One of those, of course, was us. And they talked about our academic curriculum teams, our common core learning materials, common books, those kind of things. So we were one of the five examples they used. They also talked about using data more to anticipate problems. They, there are people now who have developed basically computer models that predict which students are going to have problems and predict, predict it six months before they're in college and along the way. And then there are those predictive things. And then there are other things that happen to them as they're in the college. So it literally picks up on the students very, very quickly as they develop issues and problems. And then, and then you can flow them into your various counseling programs, those sort of things. So anyway, that was kind of the, the core of that. I think it's fairly interesting. So much material there, difficult to absorb. Of course, we also got some legislative information. I think it was, the most interesting thing I found about it was that the, the funding formula for different achievement, you know, levels, they actually cut it by about 5%, which I think is kind of odd because you're trying to make community colleges more entrepreneurial and then you remove the motivation for them to be, you know, entrepreneurial. So of the, with this new formula, of the 50 community colleges in Texas, 26 of them would actually receive less money than they did the previous session, although that's not because they didn't do well. I think of those 59 of other community colleges actually didn't meet performance levels. But some of the others, the combination of lower enrollment and the slightly reduced formula meant that like, like 26 of those 50 will not receive as much money as they did. We are not in that 26, you know, we are in that remaining 24. So we're doing, you know, okay with that. You can see the baccalaureate expansion ideas pretty much died. That, what else we got? Common course number? That one died. Campus carry? Well, okay. So did y'all want to see my gun? Oh, no, I don't have one. But, but evidently you, you're going to be able to carry a concealed weapon on campus. You will be required to have a concealed weapon permit. This is not the same as open carry. You also have to be 21. I don't know if you, any of you have those permits, but you have to go through a pretty thorough background check and fingerprinting and all those kind of things. So it's going to be a new issue. But I would guess that probably, when you look at it carefully and we, it may even be that we may have to increase policing at least for a while to see what that, I worry more, not so much about the individuals who carry concealed weapons as the fact that somebody may realize they have one, walk over, whap them in the head and take their gun and then go crazy. And, and, but, you know, we'll see. And in fact, I don't want to be ominous, but I predict that sooner or later, that's exactly what, what's going to happen. It's a very, very, very bad idea. Anything else, Ms. Appleman, that you-
This, this whole package is-
This whole policy, the bills, what passed, what did not, we're putting on our site here. You can go back and peruse it at your, at your leisure. So that's the kind of the nitty-gritty of it. Anything else?
Do you have something on the math program, math pathways?
Oh, math pathways? Yeah, that's, yeah, there's a, they, at the Dana Center, they have been developing a math curriculum program, Math Pathways is, has a number of participants. We are one of those, but they're the ones who developed the curriculum. And then they have tested the curriculum and they have, they have achieved significantly higher results. And then I guess the next stage, since we're basically in stage two, correct me if I err-
You're right.
Is that this curriculum will then become really part of our, of our, you know, academic routine here. And then so we'll figure it from that. And there's somewhere along, there's a stage three, maybe it's more community colleges going to it as the database grows.
Yeah, eventually all 50 of us should be in it.
Yeah, well, we, we'll be in the first one to try out the thing. So, and they've had some very encouraging results, particularly with first-year algebra, that sort of thing. There's a couple of other things, I guess, about, and we've already been, we're kind of ahead of the curve on this, about, about encouraging full-time enrollment, about having sort of flexible pathways so that you can get to your degrees in a hurry, trying to get people to, as, as fast as you can, as efficiently as you can, which, you know, basically calls for more automation in people. And I think it turned out our situation, which is that our typical AA graduate has, associate's graduate has about 90 hours and needs 60. And evidently this is epidemic-
It is.
-across all community colleges. And, and probably we sort of let it go because in one way you get the bucks and you get the students and that's kind of how we judge ourselves. But the, the bigger is that we need to get the students out and, and move them on down the road. So, and so again, that's in the works as well.
All of that in about a 24-hour period. Thank you very much, Mr. Carter. And I would encourage you to review the material that's in your packet because it, it will be playing by those rules here. Any other comments, questions, items? This is the piece that Mr. Carter talked about, the first piece, and the reinvent, reset, and the systems. And we will, this is a, a grant from the Gates Foundation, which is coming through our association and will be working with the TEA on some, the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board on that. So, yes.
Ms. Appleman, before you close down completely, if you would please allow me to invite the KELT, the JCC, and everybody else in the room to give a special round of appreciation, applause for our outstanding board members. You know what it means to have board members know what our board members know? You understand what that means? So let's applaud them. This is awesome.
You're welcome.
Can you imagine what it's like to be trying to lead a community college with board members who don't know what's going on? I, you know, I can hardly imagine that. So Mr. Carter, Mr. Greenhill, Dr. Morrison, President Appleman, Ms. Vandegrift, Ms. Ayala, we appreciate you so much. I mean, it just makes all the difference in the world when board members are informed. It just does. And it, it helps us to make sure that we're doing exactly what we need to do as well because you can hold our feet to the fire. So we appreciate you.
Well, we, we depend on all of you to help us down the road as well. And we, we know that we're backed by a number of outstanding professionals. And that makes our job easier.
And there's one person you can't see. Where is Barbara? Where's Barbara? She's in the room. I, I want, we want to thank her for sitting in for Rick Heiser. Sorry, not Rick, he's the son, there's his. Robert Heiser, who does the streaming. Barbara's doing it this evening, so thank you, Barbara. We appreciate it. And Alex, we already thanked you for standing in for Shelley, so we appreciate it.
And you did it. Both did it. Great job.
That's all I've got.
We will now go into closed session for deliberation of real property, Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code, deliberation of personnel matters, Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code, and consultation with our attorney, Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. We do anticipate some action at the end of the closed meeting, but if you hurry home, you can catch us on live stream. So we are recessed until further notice.
We will reconvene the Board of Trustees and we have a motion. Mr. Carter?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that the board authorizes the chance to purchase the property located at 5450 North Riverside Drive in Fort Worth, ZIP Code 76137, under the terms set forth in the letter of intent dated June 5, 2015, between Nextrex, N-E-X-T-R-X Inc., and Tarrant County College District.
Dr. Morrison's second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned and our next meeting is July 16.
You give it to her.
Okay, that's it, Ms. President?
Okay, all right.